What's up y'all, this is Amaria Mallory with True Star Media. Today we have Mr. Che Rhinefest Smith in the building, and he is running to be a member of the Chicago Board representing the 10th District. Thank you for being here with us today. Can you introduce yourself and talk about your relationship to Chicago's music scene and your history of working with Kanye West?
Oh yeah, well, my name is Che Rhinefest. Like you said, my history is I grew up with some friends and we worked together and we made it a success out of our gifts. And what I mean by that is, look, everybody has a gift. I just asked one of the brothers, "What was your gift?" And he said filmmaking. We used our gifts of writing, expressing ourselves authentically, and the love of music to actually just put stuff out that we like doing. And it became a success in the music industry. I think a lot of times people, they chase success. What we did was just let our gifts make room for the success. And what I was able to do with this success, meaning, you know, I won two Grammys, or we wrote a song that won an Academy Award, "Me in Common", wrote a song called "Glory" that won an Academy Award. I took that experience from making music, traveling the world, seeing different cultures, learning the music business, and I brought it back to Chicago and I taught young people impact writing, music business theory. I taught young people how to, whatever your artistic gift is, how to express it authentically without chasing the industry. Because our success came from not chasing the industry. And in terms of Kanye, people always ask me about, you know, what's it like, what was it like growing up with Kanye or working with Kanye? But what I find the real question is, it wasn't Kanye, it was his mom, Dr. Don DeWes. She was a Fulbright scholar. She was the dean of the English Department at Chicago State University, and she was a teacher of children. And that's who we all learned from. You know, we would, we would come in and have songs about how many people we shot, or how many girls we had sex with, or how much dope we sold. And this is 25 years ago, and it was still popular on the radio to exploit ourselves and community. And when Kanye and GLC and myself would come in with those type of songs, Dr. Wes would ask us, "Is that who you really are? Is that, if you become successful in the industry, do you want to be trapped into the character and the caricature that is portraying?" And we're like, "No, that's what you gotta do to get famous." And she's like, "No, what's your real story? Who's your mom? What do you want for your siblings? What do you want for your future and your life?" And then you start coming up with lyrics like, "We all self-conscious, I'm just the first to admit it." You know what I mean? So like, a lot of that stuff came from the training of responsible adults and mother and father figures in the community that helped us to do what we were able to do musically.
What inspired you to move away from your music in the music industry to now wanting to work with the Chicago Board of Education?
You know, I think a misconception is that in order to be civically engaged, or in order to do something else, you have to move away from the music. The music is the therapy. Your art is your therapy. Your art is not what you're doing again to get paid or be successful. It's what you're doing to tell your own narrative and your own story. It's your own gospel, it's your own word. It's how you heal yourself through your art. You know, what you guys are doing here in media is self-healing and you're learning. It's not chasing a thing. So what I'd like to do is take what I've learned in music and bring that into schools. So one of the reasons I'm running for Chicago Public School Board is to take what's exciting and beautiful about what we're talking about in art and make sure that they have that in classes. I mean, what would it be like, right? If when you go to school, you're actually going every day to finish your album? You're actually going to school to finish your film? And from school, you could win a Grammy? From school, you could win an Oscar? From an Academy Award? That would make more young people excited about going to school. From school, you're in fashion design class, so you're doing your fashion show with your student, with your classmates that's gonna be on a big runway. That is cross-curriculum with your mathematics class, so you know angles and different, you know, measurements for how you want to do your patterns. That's what I want to bring into the schools.
How do you think your entertainment background serves you as a member of the Chicago Education?
Yes, so I do believe there's a difference between art and entertainment. Entertainment is industry. Entertainment is to make money. Entertainment doesn't necessarily mean it's art. It means it is being sold for, what do they call it? Demand and supply and demand. Supply and demand, that's entertainment. Art is something that, so for example, a stop sign. Everybody knows what a stop sign is. It's red, it says "stop," you stop. There's a difference between a stop sign and a Picasso. When someone make, now you can make a lot of money painting stop signs. And I'm not against anybody that's going into the stop sign painting business. However, if you want to make Picassos, it has to have the right house, the right dimensions. You gotta have the right furniture around it. That's art. And it may be a long time before it sells for a million dollars. So, you know, the difference between art and entertainment, to me, is the difference between stop signs and Picassos. They both have value. You just have to determine what it is that best suits you.
What kind of power does an elected CPS Board member have?
So, the Chicago Public School Board is over $10 billion in taxpayers' money. Six out of every 10 of our property tax dollars, I own a home, so six out of 10 of the dollars that go to my property taxes go to schools. So the majority of your property taxes pay for the schools in your neighborhood. That is an incredibly powerful and important position. The school board gets to decide what kind of curriculum you have. So what subjects are you being taught? And where does that curriculum come from? How much the teachers are paid? The health of your school buildings? Many of our schools still have lead pipes and lead in the water. The school board determines how those schools get repaired. The school board determines everything that has to do with the health of the school. For example, when you guys went to, when you were in high school, did you have police officers in your school or security guards?
I have, I have both. I have security guards and police officers.
That is determined by the school board. So for example, one of the things that is, one of the issues facing school boards is should police officers be in the school? Or should they only be outside of the school? And how much does that cost? And what does it do to students to have official police officers in the school? Is that traumatic or not? And that's something that the school board decides whether or not that happens.
Hi guys, my name is Brenna Vences. I am coming from Corliss High School. Hi, Mr. Che.
Hey, how are you?
I'm doing good, I'm doing good. One of the questions is, why is being a member of the Chicago School Board important to you?
It is very important to me because, like I said, the school board is over $10 billion in taxpayers' money, and it determines the health of our schools. I am a product of Chicago Public Schools. I went to South Shore. Before I went to South Shore, I went to a school called Bryn Mawr, which is now called Boucher. Right down the block, I went to my neighborhood schools. My son went to public schools. And some public schools in Chicago are great. Some public schools need to be brought up to equity. It's important to me because I care about the lives of young people. I teach young people outside and inside of our schools. And I believe that young people, our children deserve a world-class education. And I have a global perspective, and that's what I want to bring to the school board.
What are your thoughts on the seven members of the school board being set to resign from their positions?
You know, so for about 15, 20 years, community members fought for this, what we're having now. This is the first elected school board in the history of Chicago. Before elected school boards, the mayor would just appoint whoever he wanted to be on the school board. And usually, they would come from special interests, business interests, and not the community. The community, that's why a lot of people don't even know what the school board is or what they do, because they were never a part of the community. They were just a part of like a poverty management type of program, you know? And unless you were in a social, economic affluent area, and then you had a better school. So, we have a huge opportunity in the fact that for the last 15 years, the community fought for an elected school board. People who would come from the neighborhood, who would have policy based on what the community wanted, not just what special interests wanted. And so, when I see the resignation of the school board members today, it makes me happy that the elected school board came right on time. This is the right time, I mean, just think, you know, sometimes we'll fight for something for a year or two years, and we'll say, "It's not working, nobody's listening, the system doesn't work." But I think what this opportunity shows us is that sometimes you gotta fight for decades. And it's exactly when this system collapsed, the new school board is coming in that's elected by the people, by the community. And so the way I look at it is, I'm so proud of the community members in Chicago that never gave up the fight for an elected school board, 'cause now the community school board is coming in right on time.
What is your connection with the 10th District that makes you want to run especially there?
So, I was born and raised on the south side of Chicago, and everywhere that I live encompasses what is now the 10th District. I live now in my grandmother's bungalow home in Chatham. And you know, a lot of times, especially with like music artists, when you become successful, the thing is like, "Man, I moved out the hood." Or like, you know, "I was able to make it out," you know? I was taught by the great teachers that I've had, Dr. Carol Adams, Dr. Timule Black, Dr. Don DeWes, Dr. Z Scott, Dr. Peggy Montez. I was taught, "You stay in your neighborhood and you build your neighborhood up, and you pay it forward." The success and everything that we receive from our community is not to run away from it, it's to build it up. Because what do we see? Look at how beautiful Bronzeville is now, and we call it Bronzeville. But when I was young, they called it the low end. You know, but people stayed and they built it up. And we realize, they rebuilt it up, 'cause it's a cherished community. But what we realize is that there was never anything wrong with this sacred ground or the brick and mortar. It's the mentality that creates a neighborhood. And you know, and this goes back to the school board. If we don't know that Lorraine Hansberry, who's a famous playwright, and made "Raisin in the Sun," made a play called "The Raisin in the Sun", if we don't know that she lived in this neighborhood and that she, her play was documenting redlining in Chicago and discrimination, we don't know the history of the sacred ground that we walk on. And that's art, and that's history. If we don't know that Nat King Cole and Quincy Jones and Curtis Mayfield lived right here, that music helps you understand mathematics and history. So, you know, what it means for me to live in the 10th District, be born and raised in the 10th District, and serve. Because this is not something, when you're running for office, you're not running to be the boss, you're running to be the servant. So I am running to serve. And so to be able to run to serve you, to serve your little brothers and sisters, that is an honor and a privilege that I'm even in that position to do that.
We thank you for that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Natalie Jackson, and I attend Morgan Park High School. Hi, Mr. Che.
Hey, I love Morgan Park.
My first question is, in what ways do you believe students in the 10th District are underserved and underrepresented?
So, you know, I believe we need more student committees. You have LSCs, which are local school councils, that represent the schools and what a particular school may need. But I want to see more councils from students at Morgan Park that are listened to by people who are on the board. What you need, you know, there's, if you have a certain GPA, I believe it's like a 3.5, 3.8 GPA, you can be an honorary school board member as a high school student, as a junior or senior. You could be an honorary school board member. I want to see the youth honorary school board members have more access to the schools and really help counsel school board members in a more authentic, real, real way that affects policy. So, you know, I'd just like to see more young people be civically engaged and involved in the decisions that affect the education that you're receiving.
I definitely agree. The next question is, how do you plan to bridge the learning gap and opportunities presented to selective enrollment high schools and regular high schools?
So, you know, in terms of bridging the opportunity gaps, you know, there's a school called the Agricultural Science High School on the, I believe it's on the west side. They have cows, they have horses. They're working with like ag finance. These are things and lessons that like Phillips High School can have a sister school somewhere else that specializes in another vocation, but they trade. So now Phillips High School can have access to their cows and horses. They can have access to something Phillips has that they need. We have city colleges like Chicago State University that has a pharmacy program that a lot of young people in high schools don't even know. Pharmacist make $90,000 to $100,000 a year. And one of the best, least expensive pharmacy programs you can attend is Chicago State. Chicago State pharmacy programs need to be in Dunbar, need to be at King, need to be at Morgan Park. We have so many assets. We have the Park District. I helped create a festival called Teens in the Park Fest, which is the longest-running youth-led festival in the city of Chicago, where young people create the festival and attract other young people to the resources at the festival and perform at the festival. This needs to be a part of the Chicago Public Schools, where young people in the schools know, "Hey, we could create our own Lollapalooza on the south side." So when we're talking about opportunity gaps, how I view it is that if we use the assets that are already in the community and create collaborations and coalitions, this doesn't cost money, it just takes us all working together.
I definitely agree. The last one is, if elected, what's the first thing you want to change or improve?
So, we talked, we spoke a little bit about local school councils. A lot of LSCs in our school, in our communities, in our community schools are not fully staffed. People are not fully trained to even know how to be an effective local school council member. I want to make sure that all of our underserved schools and schools that need more equity first have responsible, trained people that can represent the needs of that school. So I will be working, when I get on the board, I will be working to fully staff and fully train all of our LSCs so that we can begin to make a goal for the school. So, you know, there are gonna be 21 people on this board. There's nothing I can do by myself. I am not the healer and revealer of all things. It has to be community collaboration. So I want to make sure that the community has enough input, knowledge, understanding, transparency about what it is the school board can do, and that the community has enough capacity to work with me as we fulfill the needs of each school.
Good afternoon, my name is Raymond Porter. I graduated from South Shore International College Preparatory, woo-woo, and I'm currently attending Harold Washington Partner with the IIT, part of the Ascend Program. So it's nice to have you here today.
Thank you for having me.
So coming from that teacher perspective, 'cause you are a teacher and you are an educator, and you do believe in youth equity, like you said, uh-huh, what are your thoughts about the no-phone policy during schools, even if there is an emergency?
I'm working on a no-phone policy at home. So, you know, so I'll give you an example. My wife and I, there's a setting on the phone where you can pick what time the phone goes off and all the apps, and what time it comes back on. For my own sanity, my phone has to go off at 9:30 and come on at 8:30. And by the time my phone comes back on, it's because I woke up at 6:00 a.m. and the first thing I checked wasn't my phone. It was my own mind state. My own, are my fingers working? I wiggle my toes, I wiggle my, I make sure I'm working before I start doing my phone. And I think that the phone, I know, I believe that the phone, it can be a tool, or it can be a weapon. And it is also proven to be highly addictive. And so I think that when students are supposed to have more time on task and learning, I believe that the phone should be put to the side. And if there is an emergency, I believe that the instructor, and this is why I'm also getting on the board and I'm advocating for more SICAs, which is substitute teachers, therapists, counselors, people who assist a teacher, I believe that there'll be enough responsible people in the room to be able to address any emergency without every student having a phone during act curriculum time.
So you, you know what I'm saying? You're dabbling a lot in like in schools and things like that about what you feel like the youth need in order to succeed and what could better manage them, like in the classrooms and things like that. So sticking on that school perspective, bridging the gap between artistry, which is what you are, you're an artist. How do you feel about the art programs? And why do you feel like, do you feel like it's important to have those in schools?
Yeah, you know, there are, there are a ton of art teacher positions open in the city of Chicago in our schools. And guess where most of those positions are opened at? On the south side, on the west side, in the underserved schools. Children, young people, I don't, you know, you guys are our children. Young people need access to quality arts programs, because quality arts programs help young people deal with critical thinking skills, with de-escalation, with therapy and understanding themselves, and helps prepare them for STEM, for the science, technology, engineering, and math. And you know, I'll say this, I always hear people talking about STEM, but nobody ever adds the A and makes it STEAM so it can like really move forward. And I also look at it like, if we're gonna have a board, a Chicago Public School Board, right? It should be dynamic. There should be scientists on the board. There should be business people on the board. There should be teachers on the board. And there's gotta be artists on the board. You know why? 'Cause everybody says they want art, yet when the budget comes up, that's the first thing that gets chopped. You need an advocate for the arts on the board. What you guys are doing right now is business, it's media, and it's art.
Yep. So, so last question, are you ready? You ready? All right, all right, all right, all right. So now, yep, we right here, but you know what I'm saying? You're into politics, you know what I'm saying? You're running, you're in your election.
I'm not a politician, I'm a politician.
Oh, okay, okay. You see how he corrected me, okay, okay? Now, in what ways do you see that you want to see CPS be improved within the next five years?
Well, Dr. King said, remember I told you, the budget is $10 billion a year? But right now, that budget has a $1 billion deficit, which means they have a billion dollars on CPS that they don't know how they're gonna pay teachers, fix buildings, get libraries and librarians for every school, nurses for every school. Dr. King said that a budget is a moral document, because in a budget, you could see someone's principles and their value systems. I believe that the way our budget has been directed hasn't represented the value systems of the community that goes to our schools. And what I would like to see, first things first, is a balanced budget. And just because you spend more money, doesn't mean you get better quality. So, you know, people have been spending more money and getting, and we still have a 31% literacy rate, 6% mathematics, you know, rate. You know, this, right now, I mean, 10 years after Flint, Michigan, we still have lead in our water at schools. This is a humanitarian crisis. I'm tired of us normalizing poverty, normalizing low expectations. You know, the federal government needs to step in, because if young people can't read, they can't work. And if we can't work, it's chaos, you know? And so there are a lot of opportunities, we just need to be prepared for them. And I think the first thing we need, we must do, is balance the budget. But the way to do that is, we gotta cut waste, stop spending on stuff people don't need or want. You know, we went through the pandemic, and a bunch of Chrome tablets were purchased. The school district doesn't know where those tablets are at now. And that was like millions of dollars. Oh, by the way, they put a tracking system in the tablets for millions of dollars, and it doesn't work. So they couldn't even track the tablets that they bought. So we gotta stop spending on goofy stuff, bro. And, but I also think number two, we talked about Chicago State University. We need more teachers, right? Chicago State University specializes in training teachers at the lowest cost of any university in the area. We gotta utilize our allies and assets. We gotta utilize the Park District. We have to make strategic partnership deals with companies like Nike, or The Sox, or any of these sports teams that want a new stadium or a tax break. How much are you giving back to our schools? Are you putting a fashion program in the schools? Did you redo the gym? Did you redo the field? Like, those are the things that I would like to see so that we can spend less money and get better results.
So yep, so that budget, definitely, that budget is definitely important, especially when it appeals to getting the young people the assets that they need through funding and things like that, through business, like you just said, you know what I'm saying? Using those assets, using those connections. So thank you for that.
It's a moral document.
It is, it is.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Our last question is, if you don't win, how do you plan to continue to be a resource for Chicago's youth?
You know, there, there isn't a don't win when you're running to serve community. Because I'm making connections with people that, although I've been running around Chicago all my life, serving and helping people, I'm meeting new people with new businesses like Dee from Urban Lux on 79th Street. You know, I'm learning about new organizations that I need to be a part of and serve in community as well. I am, I'm dedicated to service. Like that's, being a servant of the community that has given me so much, and I am so blessed that, you know, I have a career as an artist where I receive royalties. You know what I'm saying? Like, I don't even gotta really go out and be trying to make all the albums and, you know, like from "Jesus Walks" to "New Slaves" to "Glory", I've been so blessed that I can live, live a life not impoverished. And I am dedicated to showing other people, and young people especially, how they can do that. And families especially, because you have a lot of families where the dad is an artist, or the mom is an artist, you know? And they want to be able to support the family as well. I am dedicated to that. And that's, there is no lose.
Again, thank you for being here with us today. How can people get to know more about you or follow you on social media?
Thank you. If people want to know more about what I'm doing, they can go to they can go to rhinefestforcps.com, that's rhinefestforcps.com, or follow me @rhinefest on Instagram, or @rhinefestforcps on Instagram. And then I just, I'm, I'm gonna end it like this. Rhinefest for CPS, Rhinefest for CPS. Laptops, library, literary success. Corliss, Bowie, How Park and CVS, the system feeding us checkers. I'd rather eat them at chess. Yes, all hands on deck. You can get what you deserve or just take what you expect. So, you know, um, that, that's my whole thing. Keep doing the art. Don't, don't stop the art just because you start or evolve into a new way. Keep rhyming, keep writing, keep drawing, keep taking pictures, keep modeling, keep going.
Yes, this is Amaria Mallory with Two Star Media. And remember, if you will be 18 by November 5th, don't forget to register and vote.
November 5th.